It is a very good morning to you all and welcome to the Breakfast Club right here on Asake. My name is Fungai Mawada. So as you may be aware, the city of Bulawayo has been conducting budget reviews throughout these past few weeks. And of course, they've been engaging members of the public as well to come forth with ideas going towards the year 2023. So today, we do have the pleasure of having an overview of those budgets that were set out in the year 2022, as well as looking towards 2023. So we are talking to the finance manager of the Bulawayo City Council, Mr. Isaac Matare, about the future for Bulawayo. Enjoy.
A good day to all our listeners. Welcome to Bulawayo's budget review that we were conducting throughout the city, throughout all the wards, from the 26th of August right through to the 28th of August. It has been a successful budget review session where we obtained a lot of views from our residents and our stakeholders. As we were crafting the 2022 budget last year, we were guided by the exchange rate that prevailed then, as well as the inflation rate that was prevailing when we crafted this budget last year in, from July right through to November. When we started crafting the budget, we had our inflation coming down last year from a peak of 352% and it went down all the way to 55%. Such that when we finally approved the current year's budget last year in November, the inflation was now standing at around 58.6%. When it comes to the exchange rate, at the time when we approved our budget, the exchange rate was now standing at 101% 101 dollars per each year's dollar. And if you look at today's rates, today being a Thursday, the 1st of September, the rates are sitting at 552 zin dollars against the US dollar. Whereas when we started our exercise of budgeting and approving it, the rate was at 101. So you can see that the exchange rate has moved and has left council with a budget in zin dollars that can no longer sustain service delivery. So what council has done, it has decided that it replaces its budget into US dollars. And the replacing was based on the exchange rate that was ruling in November when council approved the budget, which is 101 zin dollars against the US dollar. So with that replacing, we then took the tariffs that were in US dollars and we applied the exchange rates on a moving basis per month. So basically, what it turned out to be was that your charge or the tariffs that council had in US dollars remained constant. Whereas when it comes to converting them to zin dollars on a monthly basis, would apply the applicable exchange rates at the last day of the month of that particular billing. So for example, when you started replacing your bills, we started at a rate of 101 zin dollars against the US dollar. So would multiply the US dollar tariffs by 101. And then soon after that, we then applied an exchange rate of 331 zin dollars at the end of June. So if you look at your exchange rate, by the end of June, the exchange rate was now sitting on 331 zin dollars to a US dollar. When we moved on to your July bill, the exchange rate at the end of July was now sitting at 408 zin dollars against the US dollar. So we multiplied again the constant US dollar tariffs with 408. So you can see the jump between 331 and 408. This is how council will continue replacing its charges so that it can retain value and be able to provide services to all its residents in Bulawayo. We know there are chips that you are experiencing, but the city has to continue providing you services, otherwise it might grind to a halt. I would now like to turn to how we performed in 2022. Our original budget in zin dollars was around 23 billion dollars. That is both the capital budget and the revenue budget. So in terms of our budget for 2022 in zin dollars, it was sitting at 23 billion dollars, of which 15 billion dollars was the recurrent expenditure or the day-to-day expenses that council has to incur. And the balance of 7.9 billion dollars was the capital budget that is meant to improve and rehabilitate and construct new capital infrastructure. I'll start talking about the capital budget, which is 7.9 billion dollars for this year, of which 1.2 billion is funded through the devolution funds that we are getting from government. We are also happy to share with you that we also obtained 338 million dollars. We allocated 338 million dollars for the road rehabilitation program phase two. How much did we spend this year against that 7.9 billion dollars? We were able to spend 282 million dollars up to June, which is the period of the review on our capital project. The bulk of the money was taken up by the road infrastructure. It went to roads more than any other services that council provides to its residents. We were able to spend 204 million dollars out of the 282 million dollars that we spent up to June. Why? Because we were able to get funding on the emergency road rehabilitation program, which enabled us to spend more money on road infrastructure. When it comes to water, we managed to spend on the capital side about 12 million Zimbabwean dollars. Another service that council provide is the health. So on health services, we managed to spend almost 36 million dollars. Let's now turn to the recurrent expenditure, our day-to-day operation, where the budget stood at 15.9 billion dollars. When we compared the budget for the six months, which is about 7.5 billion dollars, against the expenditure that we had incurred by June, we had only incurred an expenditure of around 6 billion dollars. So you can see that on the expenditure side, we had a positive variance of almost a billion dollars. The reason for this positive variance of about a billion dollars, that is 7 billion dollars budget versus the 6 billion that was actually spent in six months, is because of the availability of funding. We were spending the money that we received from the red payers, the residents, as they paid for services, including their bills. They had only managed to pay us enough money for us to spend 6 billion dollars in the six months. Let's come to the revenues of council. Again, we do a balanced budget in terms of the Public Finance Management Act. It doesn't allow us to budget for a surplus, not to budget for a deficit. So our budget was balanced at 15 billion dollars revenue, 15 billion dollars expenses. What has been the outcome in the past six months up to June? We managed to accrue revenues to the tune of 10.3 billion dollars in the six months that have gone. So you can see again, we've got a positive variance on our revenues of around 2 billion dollars. So in that situation, one might ask, why do we have a positive variance on our revenues? The positive revenue variance arises from the replacing that we did on your bills in May as well as in June. So that had an impact of improving the revenues that we experienced right up to June. Now let's turn to how much we were owed by the residents of Bulawayo as of 30 June this year. We were owed in the regions of 8 billion dollars by the residents of Bulawayo, both industry commerce, government, parastatals and individual residences. They owed council in excess of 8 billion dollars. What about the creditors, where council obtains its supplies? The services that are provided to council, how much does council owe these creditors? Council owed around 3 billion dollars to its creditors. So you can see from these two figures of around 9 billion owed by debtors and 3 billion owed by creditors, that we had a liquidity ratio of around 3 to 1. You might be surprised why our creditors are so low. The simple reason is because council has been struggling to pay its suppliers. Most of them had suspended our credit terms and now we had to pay with cash. So with the liquid cash that was coming through, we were able to pay suppliers and most of them stopped giving us goods on credit. That's why our creditors are on the lower side. I would now like to turn now to the funding that we got from government, that is the devolution fund. When we submitted our budget last year for the devolution funds of 1.219 billion dollars, roadworks were going to take 36% of that amount, which is 142 million Zimbabwean dollars. Culture Park and expanding suburb in Bulawayo, which is now becoming the biggest suburb in Bulawayo, has got a need for schools. And the devolution funds were applied in making sure that we built a school called Volinjela Primary School and it's ongoing as you speak. But when we submitted our budgets to the ministry, Volinjela was going to be allocated 91 million dollars. Now the bulk, the balance of it went into construction. It went also into buying plant and equipment. And we had made a bid for 686 million dollars towards the acquisition of this equipment. So the government is releasing these monies progressively so that council can be able to produce the results that the residents require. We will now talk about a project which is not being undertaken by council, but is being undertaken by government working with ZINU. This is the Kwaishangani Dam. We are advised that the water that is going to come from Kwaishangani Dam to Bulawayo will be 220 meka liters a day. And this is quite exciting. As soon as this project comes to fruition, we will be able to get a sizable amount of water such that Bulawayo will have stable water supplies. At the moment, ladies and gentlemen, we are supplying Bulawayo with 160 meka liters a day. That's the demand of water that we are having in Bulawayo. But when the Kwaishangani is finally completed, we'll be getting 220, which is almost 60 meka liters above what we are currently using. So it's quite exciting. We look forward to that project being completed. What will it do for us? Imagine it will improve the economy of Bulawayo. Some companies were relocating because of water crisis in Bulawayo. But with this assurance, we are expecting to see a lot of businesses sprouting up, a lot of economic activities being undertaken within the city. Now I would like to share with you a few things that council has achieved in terms of water and sewage. We worked on the rehabilitation of a sewer plant which is located on the western side of Bulawayo, which is called Southern Areas Treatment Works. We were refurbishing this treatment work so that it could process, increase the volumes of water. And we were happy to announce to you that we managed to complete the rehabilitation of SAST Treatment Works in April. The joy that we have about this product is that we are now reducing a lot of the unprocessed effluent that was going to come in them. So we are happy that the effluent that finally is fed into come in them is of a higher quality and we can be able to reuse that water for other purposes. We also were working on the side of water on our second breakers and isolators at Nema and Fenniel pump stations. Council has got a water treatment plant at Scottini called Nema and another one near Scottini called Fenniel, which is a pump station. We had to replace the pumps that were there. And after replacing these pumps, which I knew, we also needed to make sure that the second breakers are replaced. So this year, we have been working to make sure that the 16 second breakers that need to be replaced were done in good time. As we speak, we are happy to announce that by the end of September, we should have finished installing all the 16 second breakers. What has we done during the course of the year? Bulawayo City Council installed solar panels on top of the revenue where you make your payments. Now there are quite a number of solar panels that have been installed on top of the building to assist council in reducing the demand on electricity on the grid, as well as greening the city as part of our image of making the city look beautiful. So we are now at the stage where we will be installing 43 lithium batteries to tap the solar energy that is being obtained above the revenue section. Also, you might have noticed that there are certain sewers that are flowing through your suburbs and council needed to make sure that those sewers are taken care of. So we worked on the Lopengola Sewer Line and this sewer line was finished on the 16th of August this year. That's one of our achievements, renewing the sewer line in Lopengola. We also worked on renewing the sewer line in Tokhester, which is in the industrial areas. We call it the Korbro Outfall Sewer Line. We were able to work on this and we are still continuing with this project. And hopefully by the end of September this year, we would have finished rehabilitating the sewer so that we avoid sewers spilling into our streams and messing the city. I would also like to mention that council has been working on rehabilitating almost a kilometer of sewer line in Makokoba. Makokoba has experienced some perennial sewer issues and council has been working on those. I'm happy to announce that on the 31st of August 2022, we were able to complete that particular project. Now I would like to move on the projects to do with water. As we are away, we were losing a lot of water through a lot of pipe breakages and we needed to address those water losses. They were standing at around 44% and our target for this year was to reduce them by 4% so that they get to 40%. What has council done in that effort of reducing the amount of water that is being lost because of various reasons? What we have done, we went on to renew the water mains in Impopoma, where we were able to do 1.2 kilometers of pipeline renewal so that we reduce water losses along that pipeline. We also identified a pipeline in Mziligazi about a kilometer long that was giving us problems of water losses and we were able to address this. And both of these two water projects that we undertook were able to complete them in April this year 2022. Now our task to turn to our performance when it comes to health issues. Bulawayo City Council is responsible for ensuring that the personal health, the environmental health is taken care of. So we were working to enable the city to handle issues related to health. I'll start on the personal health front. What were we doing when with personal health? Well, we wanted to increase the availability of medicines. Whenever you visit a clinic, we wanted you to be able to access medicines after you've been treated. Our target was to make sure that we have got 100% of the medicines that you want. As we speak, by June, we were able to increase the availability of vital medicines, essential medicines and necessary medicines to 89%. That is up to half the year. Hopefully, as we finish the year in December, we should have hit our target of ensuring that medicines are available to our patients. We also are not forgetful of the HIV which has been ongoing. We wanted to increase the numbers that we were testing from around 85% to about 90%. Up to June, we had tested around 28,000 of our residents for HIV. Out of the 28,000, only 7% of their results were positive or around 2,100 people who were tested were found to be positive. Out of the 28,000 that we tested. These are some of the achievements that your council has made as far as personal health is concerned. We are also excited to report that we had a target of collecting refuse from your residential properties once every week. We are happy to mention that we were able to do so with the help of community trackers. Who are community trackers? These are people who have got their tracks and they partnered with council to allow their tracks to collect refuse on a door-to-door basis and then bring it to a collection center where the refuse is then transferred to council's refuse trucks. We are happy to say this exercise has been going and has been successful in collecting refuse in people's doors. What about the CBD? We do admit that of late, the CBD was facing a challenge on refuse collection. But your council is happy to announce that we have come up with a program to ensure that refuse is collected in the sanitary lens at least once a week. Our target is to go back where we collect refuse on a daily basis at all business centers, including the CBD. Our biggest challenge when it comes to refuse collection has been the vehicles. Our vehicles are now aging. We now need to replace the fleet. So of those aging vehicles, we are busy working on them, making sure that they are repaired and ready for reuse. Let's talk about Ngozi Mine, where we then go and dump the refuse. At Ngozi Mine, we needed to do daily compaction of the refuse that is dumped and covering this refuse at the landfill site. What we faced during this period was a challenge with our equipment, the compacters that have to compact the landfill site. But we did manage to fill the landfill site and also do some compaction. And we hope that once the equipment is serviced and repaired, we'll be able to continue with our daily compaction of the landfill site. We are also cognizant as a city when it comes to the health and wellbeing of our residents, that there is water that they need to look at. Is it safe for them to drink? Council goes around collecting samples at designated points. Our target for this year was to collect about 1,200 samples for the whole year. So far, we have managed to collect around 944 samples by the end of June. Although our target was 1,200 for the whole year, we managed to collect samples around 944. So we take these samples at designated points to test the quality of our water, whether it's still suitable for consumption. Also, where you buy your food, where you purchase your food that you consume at home, we also need to test to make sure that those who prepare food, their premises meet the health standards. So our target was to collect about 120 samples over the course of a year. As we speak right now, we're able to swap 77 food preparation shops. And unfortunate to say that most of them did not pass the test. We advised them on what they needed to do so that we keep the safety of the people of Bulawayo paramount when it comes to them buying food that is already prepared in some of these places. I will talk about the burial places where after everyone has lived his life on earth, we need to bury him somewhere. We are happy to announce that we opened the Umvuchwa cemetery as part of our strategy to ensure that graves are available so that our residents get a decent burial. So at this moment, burial space is available at Luvevah Cemetery as well as Umvuchwa Cemetery. As part of our ongoing exercise when it comes to the environment and the wellbeing of the city, we also needed to make sure that we place traps to trap rodents, also to spray the water bodies so that mosquitoes don't breed. We wanted to make sure we covered 100% of the places where we needed to set our baits for rats as well as spraying for mosquitoes so that they don't propagate in the city. By the end of June, we had already covered 53% of the areas that we had identified and we hope to complete the remaining ones during the course of the year. As far as setting up rodent traps around the peripherals of the city, we were expecting in this year to set up these rodent traps amounting to 1,188 around the Wall of Blower so that rats don't become a nuisance in the city. We only managed to do 15% of these traps. Our biggest challenge has been vehicles to move around in the bush, putting these traps around the city. So we hope that as soon as you get good transport, we will improve on this particular percentage. Now let's share with you on the side of housing. What did we do on housing? We wanted to allocate around 3,000 stens to people this year. And we have only managed to allocate 381 stens with 3,153 stens in the process of being serviced as we speak right now. So we are aiming to reach our target of providing 3,000 stens by developing 3,153 stens throughout the city. Also, as we are given a stent, we have to inspect those buildings that you are putting up as well as the existing buildings. We need to make sure that they meet the standards. And we wanted to inspect 17,700 of these buildings. And by June, we are happy to announce that we already inspected 14,000 such buildings. And as you submit your plans to council, we need to issue with an occupation certificate to say your building has passed and now it can be occupied. We wanted to issue 500 occupation certificates this year. But as we speak, up to June, we had done 244, almost halfway through the occupation certificates that we needed to issue to people. We are now looking at the future. What is the future as far as developing the city? We have got layouts that we submitted to the ministry on various sites where we want to develop in the future. We are happy to announce that we have had the ministry approving our layouts, like the layout for Wimvumila, which is going to give us some industrial stens as well as residential stens. We are looking at a layout which has already been approved by the minister, which will result in about 288 industrial stens being developed or serviced in culture park area. We also have got layouts in node phase two and node phase three. We are also preparing other layouts. So council is not sitting on its end, but it's preparing layouts to enable the resident of the city to have accommodation. These layouts don't only cover high-density areas. They are covering the whole spectrum from low-density, medium-density right up to high-density areas. So we are looking forward to this layout being approved by the minister and being able to deliver some land to those who are looking for it. Now let's move on to our next exciting development, the Ekotini. We are happy to announce that Ekotini development has started on phase A1. Phase A1 talks to developing vending. Phase A one talks to developing vending stores at Ekotin. Already, work is ongoing as we speak on five hundred and fifty-five such vending stores at Ekotin. And they are now at various stages. And we are hoping that by the end of November, thereabouts, these vending stores will have been completed and people who were displaced initially when we started this project will be able to move into well-designed and proper stores for them to continue with their business activities. Another important issue that we undertook this year was to ensure that we give our streets names. A lot of new suburbs did not have street names. So we are embarking on street naming throughout the city, including the industrial areas. We have work going on where we now give people street addresses as opposed to stand numbers. So we are working with the community, advising them of their new street addresses as well as naming some of the streets. Now, let's talk about education. That's another area where council provides services to. When we talk about education, we wanted to construct fifteen ECD blocks throughout the city. But as we started this work, we discovered that we could do twenty-three ECD blocks. And we are happy to inform you that we've got twenty-three of these ECD blocks which are being constructed so that our children at an early age, they are enrolled into school and be able to gain some skills and knowledge at an early stage. We spoke about Vulinjela Primary School in Cowdripak. We are building this school in phases. So we had already constructed three blocks and the fourth block is under construction as we speak. Materials for the fifth block have already been acquired this year and we are progressing with making sure that the school becomes a fully fledged school as soon as possible. And then we wanted to refurbish about eleven educational centers throughout the city. These include our old preschools that are scattered through the city. And out of the eleven, we only managed to do about three of those educational centers that are throughout the city. Still on education, we were also looking at refurbishing our vocational training centers where a lot of our youth are finding a way of acquiring skills that they will use in their daily lives. We are happy to say our enrollment is pretty strong in this particular area where we wanted to enroll close to one thousand six hundred young ones, youth who have finished their schools. We don't mind whether you passed or failed your all levels, but just come. You will learn a skill that will help you throughout your life. Out of the one thousand six hundred that we needed to enroll, we only managed to get about one thousand three hundred and eighty-one we enrolled and are continuing with their schooling in these facilities. Now, let's talk about roads. That's another area where seat of Blawayo is responsible for making sure that roads are constructed and rehabilitated and kept in a safe environment. In the capital budget, we had put nine hundred and ninety-three million zim dollars for roads. On the recurrent expenditure, we had put aside almost five hundred and ninety-six million zim dollars for repairing our roads. The devolution fund, we were allocated, as I have already mentioned, four hundred and forty-two million dollars. And then on the emergence road repair program, we were allocated three hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. And council has made sure that every month, fifty million dollars is paid towards the contracts to do with road rehabilitation. So what were we planning to do with all these budgetary provisions? We wanted to do road seals, where we were targeting thirteen kilometers this year. And when we got to June, we had done almost three kilometers of resills. When we talk of overlays, we wanted to do seven kilometers of overlaying our roads. By June, we had managed to achieve two kilometers. When it comes to road markings, we needed to mark almost sixty kilometers of our roads by putting the proper road markings. And by end of June, we had traveled nine comma one kilometers on our road markings. Then there is road rehabilitation, where we have to redo the road. We needed to do fifteen kilometers throughout the city and by June, we had done two kilometers of road rehabilitation. I would also like to mention that the city is also seized with changing the road signs to meet the Satac protocol or the Satac standard of road signs. We needed to change one thousand signs throughout the city this year. And by June, we had done hundred and five of those signs throughout the city. And then when it comes to road patching, putting road patches where the damage is okayed, our target was twenty-seven thousand square meters of road patching. And by June thirty, we had done almost five thousand square meters of tar patching around the city. And also to ensure that the roads last longer, we needed to clear the drains that are closer to the roads so that when rains come, water can just flow, it doesn't gather on our roads. We had a target of twelve kilometers of clearing the drains and by June, we had done almost four kilometers. And we are happy to announce that we did this road clearing of these drains using the communities. People within our communities were assigned to do these responsibilities. Can I now move on to protection? Council is responsible for protecting the environment, protecting people's lives as well as protecting your property. And the target that council had on the environmental side was to make sure that we clear grasses around the roads, road veggies and all over the shore. And by June, we had cleared almost seventy-five percent of the areas where we needed to cut grass throughout the city. Another aspect of protecting the environment includes planting trees. When we got to June, we had already planted two hundred and fifty-seven trees throughout the city to protect the environment and green the environment. We also carried out some campaigns. We also carried out enforcement along the way to ensure that the environment of the city is protected. We also have got what we call LIP. LIP is an acronym for Local Environmental Action Plan. We had one that was crafted in twenty eighteen and its lifespan is ending this year. So we've already started working on the new Local Environmental Action Plan for the year twenty-three for the next five years. Already we have submitted this up, plan to Emma so that we get their input and we finalize our LIP program to protect the environment. What about protection when it comes to your property, to your lives? We have got our fire services which protect the lives. We managed to put out sixty-six fires, which included fires that were on properties, fires that were in the bushes, as well as fires that were caused by road accidents. We managed to attend to sixty-six of those. Said to say, fourteen of them were false alarms. We rushed to such areas only to discover there was no fire. And then we also had to work on our ambulances. We were receiving calls throughout the year and these calls were of a different nature. In total, this year, our fire ambulances received eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-four calls this year up to June. And when you call the fire, the ambulances to come and attend to you, they follow a priority. Our top priority is we rush to a road traffic accident. That's top priority, followed by incidences that happen when people are injured outside their buildings or in other places. Then the third priority is at our clinics. When there are emergencies in the clinics and we now need to transfer a patient to a hospital, we use our ambulances to transfer them. So we also go to our clinics to pick patients and move them to a referral hospital. The fourth priority is on calls for ambulances within the houses, like when we are called to ferry expecting mothers. And then the final priority is any other incident that might occur. So as I said, we were able to respond to eight, over eight thousand calls that were done for ambulances. Now, let's move on to our last segment, which is basically social services. What has council done on the front of social services? What we wanted to do was to refurbish our stadiums to meet international standards. Remember, council has got three stadiums and we were working flat out to make sure that we meet the standards set by CAF, standards set by FIFA. We were able this year to attend to the VIP lounge at Papa Fields. We are happy that that work progressed well. And still at the issue of social services, council also has got other sporting facilities other than the stadiums. So we attended to the Emma Candeni social program that is there. There is a tennis court at Emma Candeni where young ones in our high density can go and play their tennis. We were working on that one. And also, we have got a number of halls that are owned by council throughout the city. Those halls needed to be refurbished and I'm happy to announce that Stanley Hall and Mabutwene, they were tendered out and the contractors are starting on the work. And then when you come to McDonald Hall in Mziligazi as well as in Popoma Hall, we are doing the tenders so that they are tendered out and people come and refurbish those halls so that people can continue enjoying the use of those facilities. These are some of the highlights that the council achieved during twenty-twenty-two. There is quite a lot that we have done as council, including providing the city with water, ensuring that sewers are taken out of people's properties. There are quite a lot of other things that we have done, but these are the major highlights we thought we should share with you. I'd like to thank you and we would also like to thank you for the support that you have given Blawayo through your payments of your bills. We really appreciate the efforts you are doing during these difficult economic times. After presenting this budget review, the next stage that council is going to embark on is the budget preparation for twenty-twenty-three. So as we go on this next stage, we are inviting all of you to please attend the meetings that will be rolled out throughout the city in your different wards. We ask you to please attend as you did this time. We expect you to come again on a date that will be advised on our social media platforms such as YouTube, such as Twitter, such as Facebook and also through the media platforms that are there, that you can see these timetables and be able to attend in your ward, the meetings that are prepared for your wards. So we look forward to seeing you as we do our twenty-twenty-three, year twenty-twenty-three budget. We'd like to see you there and we hear your views. You share your views with us so that we can successfully craft a budget that you had an input into. Thank you.
As residents of Blawayo, of course, we are looking forward to the Guayshangani project, which of course is all the water problems that we have within our city. And of course, there are issues being raised there in terms of how we can balance the zim dollar as well as the US dollar denomination, particularly looking at our economy. But of course, kudos to all the residents who took their time to go to those budget consultation meetings. And of course, it is important for us to attend those meetings so we can have our views and and to understand the progress that our city is making. And we definitely look forward to more engagements with the Blawayo City Council. From myself, Fungai Mawada, make sure you join us again on The Breakfast Club. And please don't forget to like and to follow us on all social media platforms, website ZW on Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, as well as on Facebook. Until next time, goodbye.